Is Darren here? Yeah, there it is.
You hit it up and sit on it and then it will go down.
Okay. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors to order. Would we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following announcement, I guess it's just not really an announcement. It's a message to me to be sure to recess the meeting at noon for all you people that would like to talk on the 11:30 item for the government center frog jump. So we will adjourn promptly at noon. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda item. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without further discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested member of the public may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed for further discussion prior to the board's taking action. Does any board member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda?
I do.
Well, yeah, give me a number.
Number four, please.
Number four. Any other board member? I will pull item number three. Any member of the public wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Any staff wish to pull any item on the consent agenda?
Eight.
Holy Christ, you guys.
Did you bring a big basket, Peter?
Later. Okay, anybody else? Staff, anything on the consent agenda? Chair's open for a motion on the balance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway and a second by Supervisor Tofanelli. We have further board discussion. All in favor so indicate by stating "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board of Supervisors. Go back to item three, amended order awarding a contract for disability access consultants for the County's American with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, and authorize the CIO to sign all necessary documents. I think this was around $50,000, $40-something. And I guess my question was, is why can't we do this internally? We did one not very long ago. It's just an update. We redid all the bathrooms or the restrooms to make them ADA-qualified. Can't we get somebody in the building department to do this? In other words, why can't we do it internally instead of going out to a consultant just to update something that we did, in my opinion, not that long ago?
Jeff White, Calaveras County Building Department. The answer, the simple answer to your question of doing it internally is we don't have the people anymore to do that work. And this would take a higher level of expertise than what my staff currently has available.
Well, we have the old plan and all it is is a review of it. I don't think there's been much changing in, changes in the ADA. There've been very few changes in the county, so I don't, I mean, it seems to me it shouldn't be something very complicated to just update something we currently have where there's almost been no changes with the county and no changes with the ADA legislation that I'm aware of.
There have been a few updates on the ADA requirements, but not necessarily affecting what we have in existence here. The problem is, is that what has been done before may not have come up to what should be expected on a full self-evaluation with the transition plan. I haven't seen anything that actually addresses this as critically as it should be addressed.
Have we not done this in the past? I mean, we've done ADA work and we upgraded the restroom and we upgraded, we spent many hundreds of thousands of dollars becoming ADA compliant.
There has been, yeah, there has been some work done in the past, but I think it was done, I wasn't part of that at the time, and I tried to research whatever documents that we had available to satisfy what I think is a pretty important issue here. And I didn't see that there was enough that was done on the broad scope of all the buildings that are under county control. It was mostly local things in this, in the government center, I believe, that were taken care of to some degree. I think Tom Mitchell was heading that up at the time, and there was some effort on his behalf to address some of the actually known things that we could see here. This would take in account other buildings that are under Title II, which is government-controlled buildings.
Okay.
So the problem is, is if a complaint gets filed, we don't have a transition plan in place that puts the county in a favorable position to deflect any kinds of lawsuits.
Steve?
The Centers for Independent Living in California advise a wide range of both public and private entities on ADA compliance, and we have an organization called Drail that serves this county. I'm wondering whether there's a possibility of taking those free services to take a look at our place and having somebody from our layoff recall list at a much lower rate than what we're calling for here work with Drail in combination to take, to do the same work. Is that feasible? Is that a possibility?
Well, it depends on their, I'd like to, I think it depends on their qualifications to actually perform this. With a recently developed state program CASP, which is Certified Accessibility Specialist Program, that's a mouthful, but they are virtually the experts and you get certified through the state, through the DSA, to actually perform these types of things in Title II and Title III occupancies that allow for safeguards against having things that are out of compliance. So the, my comfort level with CASP-certified people who I have dealt with is, I feel very comfortable that they can protect the county with a survey. Also, the county budget for this last year, it's in the county budget as approved in capital assets of the amount that is reflected in the RFP. So it was a budgeted item for this fiscal year.
Zachariah, do you have a comment?
No, I was just gonna nudge Jeff to talk about the CASP certification. The state requires for the self-evaluation that a CASP-certified person do the self-evaluation of the county. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
Oh, so the person has to have a certain certification to do it?
That's correct. Yes, it's a very high-level, very difficult certification.
Okay, okay, that answers the question.
And we had to do it for the Prop 40 projects, too.
Yes.
And we had a CASP person review all those Prop 40 projects.
No wonder we have no money.
That's correct.
For all sorts of things. Ridiculous. Okay, that completes my questions. The chair's open for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by...
Comment, please.
What?
Comment.
Okay, come on up and... Peter?
I have a hard time understanding why between a planning department, Public Works, and Building Department, you cannot look it over or what those great minds in education cannot figure out what anything new came down. I also like to point out if we can get a legal end of a county come in, and the only time that the counties, recently it's been popping quite well, is a gentleman, my name was Scott Johnson, attorney, who's been suing the counties and settling with them quite the past couple of months, they're taking it a habit. If the legal department can check into it, the boiler maker, boiler plate, I presume that's the right name, the county's being sued on, and make sure that boiler plate issues get taken care of by this gentleman, you can avoid the problems that have been cropping up for the past couple of years. You can have those three departments cooperate and figure out if anything new came down and compensate for it. You got the planning department that's supposed to be able to bring everything up to date in their plans, you have Public Works, you have all those great minds in there, and a building department. Even if they hire somebody back part-time to take care of it, even if an outsourced as an independent agent come back and help the county, overall, the county would be better off. Because I look at what this gentleman gonna do, comes in for 50 grand, he's not gonna do anything. He's gonna show you the videos, the first video free, and the next couple of videos for the next couple of years, gonna charge you $1,000 for each video. And you don't know what change is gonna take place in the next couple of years. Sometimes if you think out of the box, you can save a whole bunch of money, and if the money that you have to do spend, spend it locally. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Saying now, I'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion before the board. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Comment.
Jeff, when they go through an inspectability and find it to be in compliance, will they attach a CASP sticker to either the window or the door, the entrance, to somewhere saying that it's certified, this building is now certified, it's CASP inspected?
That is one of the common practices that they do use once the building is in compliance. I'd like to address one thing briefly, is the local influence issue here. The lead person for this particular consultant group happens to live in Valley Springs, closer than I live, to the government center. So we do have the opportunity to use somebody who is from Calaveras County to be in the lead on this. And the idea here is they'll do the survey. They have a very comprehensive and user-friendly... what, and then there's a follow-up of, in the transition plan, is how that falls into the timeframe, is when those items can be corrected by priority. So they will address all aspects of the accessibility issues for the ADA and the Architectural Barriers Act as well. Thank you.
Okay, is your motion still hold?
Yes.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Tofanelli. Further board discussion. All, oh, go ahead, Darren.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad, and I'm glad you mentioned the local component, because I do know that we have several people in the county that I'm aware of, and there's probably more, that I'm not aware of, that have the ability to do these type of things. So I'm glad that you mentioned that point, that there's a gentleman that will be spearheading this project. As well as I like the idea that the technology that has been procured is such that they can create images, pictures worth a thousand words. And when you get these frivolous lawsuits, from what I understand is that, you know, if you can demonstrate at least that you have a plan in place and that you've identified those things that need to be done, regardless of whether or not the work is being done today, that if it's been identified correctly and there's an action list, that helps to stave off some of those frivolous lawsuits. So, you know, I'm not under any misconception that there's any perfect operation, but this sounds pretty good, and I'd like to commend you for what I hear.
Yes, the, I might point out that of the five RFPs we received, three of those had representation from Calaveras County.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor so indicate by stating "aye." Aye. Opposed, it passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Move then to the next item. Item four, amended order authorizing a refund of road impact mitigation fees in the amount of $36,568 to Black Creek Ranch LLC. This was pulled by Congressman Spellman, so would you like to initiate the discussion?
I'm waiting for the check and the mail, Tom.
Okay, you pulled it, Darren. You wanted, you wish to defer to Tom or what?
No, I'll tell you the reasoning for pulling, so...
Okay.
The reason for this is just by circumstance. I don't want to say that by any means I'm digging through every file in the county, but it just so happens that this particular entity, Black Creek LLC, gave some political contributions during the campaign last year, and I was made privy to documents about these individuals. I was told that these individuals, Mr. John Ellis in particular, from LLC, is under federal indictment for bankruptcy fraud, or bank and money laundering, some kind of thing like that. Bank fraud, I think that was what it was. Yeah, bank fraud, loan fraud, something like that, federal indictment. That's just what I heard, so, you know, I don't need to, but anyway, moving on from that. So they gave these documents, I looked through the bankruptcy proceedings, which is all public record. Black Creek LLC has, in their bankruptcy filings for La Cobramina, as well as many other projects, lists Calaveras County as a creditor in their bankruptcy filing. Now, I made a call to the tax collector's office and talked to Ms. Sullivan, and I wanted to clarify whether or not these people had cleaned up their money that they owed us, because I see a resolution here suggesting that we refund $36,568 in RIM fees. But when I checked with Barbara Sullivan at the tax collector's office, they have not repaid us for the money that they owe us, for which we're creditors listed in their bankruptcy. And that number is $147,000 and some odd change. So it's completely absurd to me to think that if we're listed as a creditor in a bankruptcy proceeding with these people owing us $147,000, why would, why would we even consider refunding them $36,000 and something? I mean, if anything, you might say, if we owe them the 36 grand on the RIM fees, they can take that off the top of the 147 and they owe us 110, but there's no way in heck I'm gonna vote to give them...
My suggestion would be to continue this for a couple of weeks and let county council review it. And why don't you sit down with county council and go over all the items? I'm not sure Public Works was aware of the other items. This is, this is, I mean, and this is specifically for RIM fees, so I don't know if we can offset, but I think that's a good question for county council to look at.
I'd be happy to look at it.
Okay, do you want to just continue it? Tom, you have a problem with a couple of week continuance?
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't approve it. I know that I wouldn't approve it if it moved forward today, and I don't think anybody else would.
You'll make a motion for a two-week continuance.
Yeah, I would make a motion for a continuance so that we could talk about this and get it squared away, because I know that Barbara Sullivan didn't know about it.
Why don't you make it two weeks and then, oh, here's Barbara. Okay. Do I have a motion for a two-week continuance, Darren?
Should we have Barbara make a statement first?
If she wishes to.
Would you like to?
Good morning, Barbara Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. In regard to the money that I think I heard you mention, 147,000, it is on the tax roll on the secured side and the unsecured side. But as far as us grabbing that type of money in my department, we don't do that unless it's on our tax roll.
Software system that they use to virtually give images of what's out of compliance and what, and then there's a follow-up of, in the transition plan is how that falls into the timeframe is when those items can be corrected by priority. So they will address all aspects of the accessibility issues for the ADA and the Architectural Barriers Act as well. Thank you.
Okay, is your motion still hold?
Yes.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Tofanelli, further board discussion. All, oh, go ahead Darren.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad, and I'm glad you mentioned the local component, because I do know that we have several people in the county that I'm aware of, and there's probably more, that I'm not aware of, that have the ability to do these type of things. So I'm glad that you mentioned that point, that there's a gentleman that will be spearheading this project, as well as I like the idea that the technology that has been procured is such that they can create images, pictures worth a thousand words, and when you get these frivolous lawsuits, from what I understand is that, you know, if you can demonstrate at least that you have a plan in place and that you've identified those things that need to be done, regardless of whether or not the work is being done today, if it's been identified correctly, and there's an action list, that helps to stave off some of those frivolous lawsuits. So, you know, I'm not under any misconception that there's any perfect operation, but this sounds pretty good, and I'd like to commend you for what I hear.
Yes, the, I might point out that of the five RFPs we received, three of those had representation from Calaveras County.
Okay, I have a most and a second on the floor, all in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed. It passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Move then to the next item. Item four, a minute order authorizing a refund of road impac mitigation fees in the amount of $36,568 to Black Creek Ranch LLC. This was pulled by Congressman Spellman, so would you like to initiate the discussion?
Is that an endorsement?
I'm waiting for the check and the mail, Tom.
Okay, you pulled it Darren, you wanted, you wish to defer to Tom, or what?
No, no, I'll tell you the reasoning for pulling, so.
Okay.
The reason for this is, just by circumstance, I don't want to say that by any means I'm digging through every file in the county, but it just so happens that this particular entity, Black Creek LLC, gave some political contributions during the campaign last year, and I was made privy to documents about these individuals. I was told that these individuals, Mr. John Ellis in particular, from LLC is under federal indictment for bankruptcy fraud, or bank and money laundering, some kind of thing like that. Bank fraud, I think that was what it was. Yeah, bank fraud, loan fraud, something like that, federal indictment. That's just what I heard, so, you know, I don't need to, but anyway, moving on from that, so, I, they gave these documents, I looked through the bankruptcy proceedings, which is all public record. Black Creek LLC has, in their bankruptcy filings for La Cobramina, as well as many other projects, lists Calaveras County as a creditor in their bankruptcy filing. Now, I made a call to the tax collector's office and talked to Ms. Sullivan, and I wanted to clarify whether or not these people had cleaned up their money that they owed us, because I see a resolution here suggesting that we refund $36,568 in RIM fees, but when I checked with Barbara Sullivan at the tax collector's office, they have not repaid us for the money that they owe us, for which were creditors listed in their bankruptcy. And that number is $147,000 and some odd change. So it's completely absurd to me to think that if we're listed as a creditor in a bankruptcy proceeding, with these people owing us $147,000, why would, why would we even consider refunding them $36,000 and something? I mean, if anything, you might say, if we own the 36 grand on the, on the RIM fees, they can take that off the top of the 147 and they owe us 110, but there's no way in heck I'm going to vote to give them.
My suggestion would be to continue this for a couple weeks and let county council review it. And why don't you sit down with county council and go over all the items. I'm not sure Public Works was aware of the other items, this is, this is, I mean, and this is specifically for RIM fees, so I don't know if we can offset, but I think that's a good question for county council to look at.
I'd be happy to look at it.
Okay, do you want to just continue it? Tom, you have a problem with a couple week continuance?
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't approve it, I know that I wouldn't approve it if it moved forward today, and I don't think anybody else.
You make a motion for a two-week continuance.
Yeah, I would make a motion for a continuance so that we could talk about this and get it squared away, because I know that Barbara Sullivan didn't know about it.
Why don't you make it two weeks and then, oh, here's Barbara. Okay. Do I have a motion for a two-week continuance, Darren?
Should we have Barbara make a statement first?
If she wishes to.
Would you like to?
Good morning, Barbara Sullivan, Treasurer, Tax Collector. In regard to the money that I think I heard you mention, $147,000, it is on the tax roll on the secured side and the unsecured side, but as far as us grabbing that type of money in my department, we don't do that unless it's on our tax roll. So that's just to be clear on that, so.
Okay, we'll let council come back with a recommendation and some possible action.
I make a motion for a two-week.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, before I entertain a second, Steve, do you have a comment?
Yes, I will be voting for this, but I want to disassociate myself from remarks that, about federal indictments, usually federal indictments are quite rare, and when they happen in this county, widely known. I, I don't know where your information comes from, but I certainly don't want to be putting the board imprimatur on that being a reason for this delay. Rather, it is to check, I'm voting for it for the reason of taking a look at whether or not these other funds owed can be linked with, which I doubt, but let's just.
Whether there can be an offset.
Whether there can be an offset, I don't believe there can, but I'm willing to take a look at it. But I really want to disassociate myself from the other motivations that were previously expressed.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I have a second? For a two-week continuance. Steve, you want to, are you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Spellman, a second by Supervisor Walensky for the board discussion, all in favor so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Moving forward to item five, a resolution authorizing the establishment of an interest-bearing designated fund for receipt of funds from the California Energy Management Agency, California Transit Security Grant Program. This is also a Public Works item, I didn't know who pulled it. Who pulled it? Somebody pull it? You pulled it. Peter, why don't you come to the podium and give us your reasons or your questions?
Yeah, my name is Peter Race Valley Spring, I, too bad Barbara left, but I had a question for you. Since when does the auditor in this county does the investment? I was impression the auditor will oversee it, but the actual investment is going to be done by the treasurer, tax collector treasurer, because if you read that little book that you have over here, it says that the auditor will be doing the invest, investment, which is not quite correct unless something new has changed. Who does the investment of this?
The treasurer.
The treasurer.
Treasurer, okay, because I believe in your book that it says the.
No, it says the auditor will create an interest-bearing.
Okay, so it will still be the treasurer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Chair's open for a motion on item five.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Walensky, a second by Supervisor Callaway, do I have any further board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. We'll then go to item eight, a minute order granting initial placement at step E for associate engineer position. This is a recommendation that came out of the Human Resource Department concerning Public Works. Peter, you pulled it, would you please come back to the podium?
Peter Race Valley Spring, yeah, I have a problem with this, folks, because it's basically what in your book that said is anticipated capital improvement you're going to have, okay? I don't know what you're basing it on, being the state is slightly bad off, the federal government's slightly bad off financially, and is getting, reading his job description, what he's going to be doing is overseeing other people who are going to be doing the same work he's doing. I mean, it's the best way as a cartoon I seen, you have eight, nine people standing around while one Joe digging a hole. I mean, it's just duplication. I'm sure the gentleman is very well qualified, even though I questioned the committee that found him and on what they based on, but the whole idea is creating more administration. It's silly, you losing people left and right, rank and file people, you're cutting them off part-time and et cetera, you want to hire another executive, another administrator? I mean, it's, think about it, folks, don't you have one of administrators, and you're hiring consultants to do the same job? Is this the right time to get yourself committed to another hired paid employee? Do you really think there's going to be that much capital improvement is going to be coming down the pipeline? Your present staff can't even examine handicap issues in your building. Is this gentleman could be able to do it? You have to keep hiring people from outside and consultant constantly? So, anyway, I find it very disturbing, you're canning people or laying off and putting them on part-time, the rank and file people, that you shed tears over, and then you're going higher out some more executives, folks. Get a reality check.
We get the question.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments on this item?
Mike Dawson, Valley Springs.
Michael.
I too would kind of say we have a dichotomy of different approaches to different departments. I think there would be a lot more, all the, you know, similar approaches across the way. I believe we already outsource engineering checks for the planning department. We outsource a lot of things through a lot of different departments, and outsourcing of this function at this time with not much capital improvements going along, I don't think it's something we need to invest in at this time.
Okay.
And if we need something done, just outsource the individual projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
House, again, taxpayer association. I concur with the last speaker, it doesn't make sense in times of economic belt tightening to increase staff, you can outsource.
Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments on this item. Tom, would you like to give a comment?
Honorable Chair, members of the board, Tom Garcia with Public Works, I just want to clarify a few misconceptions. The CIP, the county's CIP program currently stands at about $126 million. We have about $80 million worth of bridge improvements, and an additional 40 to 50 in, in other associated improvements. There is a tremendous workload in the CIP program that stands apart from our roadway division and integrated waste where times are tight, but we have been very successful in getting funding for these roadway improvement projects. Without the additional staff to deliver these projects, it puts us in jeopardy of being able to deliver these projects and then get additional grant funding for new projects. We, on Thursday, we received a notification that we have $1.4 million to begin work on three bridges. We anticipate notification in the next couple of weeks, which will free up the other 13 bridges that we're looking at. I'm sorry, the other 10 bridges, we have 13 bridges in total that have been approved by Calaveras for funding. We're very busy in the CIP program. We show no sign of this work going away. We anticipate additional staff will be needed in the coming years to, in order to deliver these programs and projects. The CIP program is a wonderful success in the county. It has brought in outside funding, we're improving our infrastructure, and addressing the needs of the residents. I would, this, the engineer that we have selected is eminently qualified, and we look forward to him coming on board if he's given the opportunity.
Thank you. Any board, board members have questions?
I have a couple of questions for you.
Certainly.
I appreciate your dispelling some myths, but I'd like to try a couple more on this. The first is, this is, this is a position that does hands-on work. This is, this is an engineering, an associate engineering position, not somebody who's going to be sitting over and directing other engineers to do work without doing work themselves. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is a registered engineer who will be using their stamp on plans and reviewing projects.
Secondly, if we were to outsource this, and assuming that there's a full-time equivalent, that there's more than enough for one full-time person, would the outsourcing be at a savings, or is this the most efficient, cost-effective way to perform these duties?
This is by far the most efficient way to perform these duties. We have had, the problem is, we've had trouble acquiring engineers for Calaveras County.
At our rate of pay, as I understand it, we have had several engineering postings in which nobody applied, is that correct?
We have had.
Not, not this last one, but, but in previous.
In previous, yes, but even in this one, we had applications that didn't meet our standards for employment.
And this one did, and in fact exceeded the minimum qualifications, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Further board comments or questions? Darren?
One of the things that I'd like to touch on that was brought up, I think Peter brought it up, or maybe it was Mike Dawson, some of the things we're looking at here, I mean, looking at your history, you know, during the Depression, FDR instituted programs, where they did a lot of capital improvements to get people back to work. If you look at some of the bridges around, even in our county, if you look at the date stamps, usually from the decade of the Depression, you know, the one that's most visible is if you, when you're going from here to Angels Camp, and you look at the bridge, and it has a big, huge stamp on it, it says like Calaveras Cement Company, and I can't remember the year, but I believe it's during that time period. So, you know, President Obama, similar to what Roosevelt did, instituted ara, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So that's one, that's one part of, or piece of the puzzle where funding's coming from for capital improvements. Another piece for that, including for transportation issues, is every time we buy a gallon of gas, the money that we pay in taxes is based on a percentage of the sales price. So, as arduous as it is right now, and egregious to some people's budgets, to have gas prices be so high, you know, I'd love to have lower gas prices too, but, you know, that's a different, that's a whole different thing aside, those, those taxes that are taken from our gasoline every time we buy a gallon of gas is a percentage. So obviously, if gas costs, you know, $4.30 a gallon for regular, there's going to be a lot more taxes collected than when it costs $2.50 a gallon, or $2. So because they have more of those gas associated taxes coming in, they have more funding to use for capital improvements on roads, bridges, and other things like that, which by law allocate a certain percentage of that for those means. So, for those of you who may be interested in where the money's coming from, or that kind of thing, in a down economy, so, to be a Public Works Director Garcia, to be in his shoes, he's probably in one of the best places to be in as a manager during a time like this, because you still have a guaranteed funding source, because people continue to buy gasoline.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I had one further question, I just wanted for clarification purposes. I, I really appreciate the comparative salaries between counties, and I wanted to make sure that I'm reading this properly. Out of 17 counties surveyed, Calaveras ranked 15th in, in the compensation for this position, so we're, we're not exactly competitive wage-wise, and that the only two counties that had anything less for a similar position were Mariposa and Mono Counties. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
That's correct. And in the board packet, Francine Osborne, Director of Human Resources. As you can see, we've fallen behind. This is a specialty position, they're very difficult to recruit, we've had a history with trouble, that's one of the reasons years ago, we put together the recruitment and retention incentive, but right now, we're 13 to 21 percent below other counties.
So we're using the step placement, which you were given as a discretionary recommendation to bring to the board for approval, you're actually using this to be able to accomplish a recruitment that's been almost impossible over the last few years to, to achieve?
That's correct.
All right.
And I don't have the authority at E-step, so typically.
That's right.
We only go to D, but in this case, this actually negates the problems that we have on the salary scale.
It still places us 15th out of 17, though we don't, we don't actually move up, as near as I can tell, more than step two.
I appreciate you reading it.
Thanks. The chair will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Walensky for the board discussion. All in favor so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Move forward to item nine, a resolution authorizing the Calaveras County Clerk Recorder to conduct and render specified services for, for special districts in the consolidated general election to be conducted by all mail ballot on August 30th, 2011. This is an election item, Peter, you pulled it, what are your questions?
I got a question, I got a statement. Folks, did you hear about leading the witness?
What?
Last, leading the witness, those pulling it out with teeth. I want to make sure, because it does fit into here, you folks say you're not paying as much as other counties do, well, what about bragging about where this county economically stands in a state? You got 45,000 people, and you want to be staying up with Sacramento? No, as far as the clerk of election goes, she's proposing to do electronic voting, which I can see is a very good idea. What does she have in place to verify it, and make sure there's no election fraud will take place? I believe it's coming down a tube that you're going to be able.
It's mail.
Excuse me, I'm addressing the chair, please. Keep it that way, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to make sure that signing up to elect, election for absentee ballot, that you're going to be able to do through computer, and they're going to send out absentee ballots, basically voting by mail. I want to see what kind of, what safetyness she's going to have in this county to make there's no election fraud. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to, Madeline, do you wish to address that item? Or, excuse me, what's the other name?
Rebecca.
Rebecca.
Rebecca. Rebecca and all elections coordinator. The item is actually calling for the election itself, which is all male, and that was the district's discretion.
We approved the all-male ballot earlier, did we not?
Well, this particular is for the August 30th consolidated districts election, and the districts at their discretion have already approved that they have all-male ballots on August 30th. As far as for the security of the election, if that's the question now, anybody's welcome to, we're always open when we're verifying signatures, to, to watch our processes, so every signature that when you sign your vote-by-mail envelope is verified, and we have a signature on file, that we compare that against, so, I don't know if there's further questions about the security.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. This isn't a discussion of an all-male ballot, it's merely a discussion of the consolidation. The all-male ballot issue's already been resolved.
That's correct.
So, with that, chair's open for a motion.
I'll move that.
I have a motion by Supervisor Walensky, do I have a second by Supervisor Tofanelli, do I have further board discussion? All in favor so indicate by stating aye. Aye, opposed, passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Move forward to item 10, our regular agenda, public comments, five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to the items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Hello?
Hi, Krista Thompson, Mental Health Services Act Coordinator for Behavioral Health Services, and I have goodies.
Oh. Goodies, I thought we were getting food.
Is it for our mental well-being?
Yeah.
I have food for thought. I'm here to let the board know and, and to invite the board and the press to, to a very special event that Calaveras County Behavioral Health Services is sponsoring in collaboration with Calaveras River Academy. This is a unique event to celebrate Mental Health Month, which is this month, and we are really wanting to highlight activities that give our youth and other community members hope during times of emotional struggle. We hope that this Day of Hope, which is what we are calling it, will bring awareness to mental health, stigma reduction, and positive alternatives for our youth. This Day of Hope will be this Friday, the 13th, we made it easy to remember, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and that's when, that's when we invite different county workers who work with our youth, the board, as well as the press, to, to join us and see this amazing collaboration of these two organizations, as well as the resources that are, that are coming, the county agencies and organizations that are coming to talk about the alternatives that they provide for our youth, to give them hope. This is the first time that we've done this, we're hoping that it can become an annual event. I think this is pretty cool, because it stemmed from the inspiration of one of the Calaveras River students. We were there for a training, and, and one of the students came to us with this idea, and it branched out from there, we've been working on it for about the past six months. I also want to say that we do have a couple booths still available, if anyone is associated with any resources that will provide our youth some positive alternatives, I invite you to contact me at 754-2810, again, 754-2810. And I'd like to make a couple. And I'd like to make a couple acknowledgements, very briefly. This would not have been possible without our Calaveras River students, who I would like to come forward and just share a couple words about why this was so important to them. Gentlemen? While they're coming up, I would also like to thank Denise Combs for helping to make this happen on the Calaveras Riverside, as well as Acela Donovan Blood, who is now working with behavioral health, and who I truly could not have accomplished any of this without her. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, and invite our gentlemen here to talk about why this was so important to them.
Nick Goble, Macallamiejo. Well, Estelle came to their school and presented this program, like just different alternatives to avoid suicide prevention. And I came there after the, after their program, and I said, why, why do we have to make this just a selected few students? We can make this like a big thing. Because I know teen suicide has, the statistics have gone dangerously high, and it's not good, and I have actually had some experiences with depression, and I thought that maybe if I, you know, expressed what I did to deal with my problems, maybe other kids would find like solutions to their problems also.
Thank you.
Zach Koch, Angels Camp. Having dealt with depression and anxiety before, I was all on board with my good friend, Nick. I think this is a great, a great program. I can see great things happening from it. A day, a day of hope isn't just about, you know, you know, having hope, it's about finding ways to better yourself within yourself, like finding better ways to, you know, deal with your time, other than like drugs and alcohol to deal with your depression or anxiety. You know, like hiking, sports, you know, music, which is what I do. And I just, you know, I feel like it can be a great, great, great program for anybody, you know, not just people with depression, you know, it can be a fun thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonardo Torres, Angels Camp. I was not originally part of the team, the suicide prevention, but I was brought on by my friends Nick Goble and Zach Koch, because I have too also suffered with some depression, and know people that have suffered with depression and suicidal thoughts. They've come to me, talked to me about them, and I've tried to help in that, in every way I can. So with this program, I believe I could help out more by showing people there is other ways than just, for better words, ending it, ending their lives, by like being part of recreational activities. And I feel like this is a great idea, and I invite you guys to come, to show up, to see what we can do for the next couple of years to help kids with depression, with suicidal, and everything of the above, that there is other ways, and in life, you can hope, and there will be ways to suffer through things that bring you hardship.
Thank you.
I just want to say how proud and privileged I am to work with this fine group of young men, and I just want to thank the board and the community for their ongoing support. And it's amazing what we can do when we work together, and see the hope and the potential in our, in our young people. I also want to mention that the Consumers of Behavioral Health Services has also been collaborating on this event, and I want to thank them for their efforts too. So thank you, and if anybody has any questions, please feel free to call me.
Thanks, Krista.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs, Rancho. Welcome home, Steve. I would just like to thank these young men, and for Krista and the collaborative efforts that are happening here. But I think, I want to make sure that they understand that we all realize that it takes courage to step up here and peel yourself open and say, I've had experience, and I hope that they know that, sorry, I hope that they know that this is where the healing begins, and this is how we make change. So applause, applause, applause.
I'm Peter NK, resident of Arnold, California. I'm concerned about the decision to go ahead and award FLINCO the lowest bidder for the local detention facility. My concern is a lack of local participation requirements written into agreement. Now, our county has many talented construction personnel available to assist in the building of the detention facility. However, because it's not written into the record, FLINCO has no responsibility to hire local talent to assist in the building of the detention facility. It's FLINCO's intention, is it FLINCO's intention and the intention of FLINCO subcontractors to bring construction workers from outside the county to do the work? Since the contract does not expressly mandate that there be local participation, there is none. Now Supervisor Maria Callaway has stated that she'd like to see local participation. Sheriff Gary has stated he'd like, I really want to distribute as much work to Calaveras County subcontractors as possible. Question I have is this, what can we do to allow for local participation of local county residents in the building of the detention facility?
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Al Segal, Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. Just some general comments. On the FEMA, there was some discussion about the Brown Act and the FEMA meeting in Sacramento, and our association is looking at coming up with a policy for our taxpayer association about FEMA. And so I have to take my hat off, because now I'm not representing the taxpayer association and make my own comments. One of the things I'd like to say about the Brown Act experience is, I personally am not so concerned with the Brown Act as to why the supervisors were there. If they were there to assist the federal government to implement the federal programs within the county, that's one thing. If they're there to protect the property rights of the citizens of the county and their constituents, that's another. And my hope is that the latter is the rule, and if that is such the case, I'd certainly applaud you. There seems to be five levels of concern for property owners. Number one, about FEMA, FEMA insurance, is the maps and engineering, there's problems with that. Number two is the definitions, which is built into the rules, every, that's going to require some legislation changes at the federal level. The next one is financial soundness of the whole, the whole thing. Apparently, it's not financially sound. The next item is compulsion, forcing people to buy insurance. If you force a person to buy unneeded, unwanted insurance in America, it just doesn't seem right for that to happen in our country. And the last thing, and perhaps the most important, is the constitutionality of the whole program. We have a federal government now, it's 40% out of whack, under budget. They, they're spending more money that they're taking in. They can raise taxes, they need to cut. They're afraid to cut. They're trying to get by without, without cutting. And one of the best things to cut would be those things that the federal government's doing that's not authorized by the Constitution. You look at the federal activities in our county, those things that, those areas that they're, that the federal government's doing things to us are not authorized by the Constitution. And so if the federal government would simply restrict its activities to that which is provided by the Constitution, there would be no 40% out-of-budget problem. It would be in budget. And not only that, the amount of economic hardship and oppression would be relieved, and our, and our counties would be more prosperous, as would our whole country. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs, and today I'd like to talk about an old topic, which is IHSS. I'm going to talk about wages for IHSS. Right now, in Calaveras County, home care providers are being paid $10 an hour. In 2009, an attempt was made to cut our wages, and it failed, because it was illegal. At that time, the county paid 17 cents on every dollar that home care providers were paid. That means for every dollar that the county paid, it attracted $6 from state and federal funds. After July 1st, when the stimulus money came in to Calaveras County, well, it was came into California, the ratio of home care providers, the formula changed. The county did no longer have to pay 17 cents, it only paid 13.44 cents. The state reduced its allocation and contribution to less than 25%, and the federal government kicked in the rest. That means for every dollar that Calaveras County contributed to care provider funding, it attracted $7 in state and federal monies. I know pretty soon, there's going to be a lot of people coming and asking for all this money that you have left over, to fill their coffers, to help their programs. I guess I'm the first to come and ask, if there's money floating around, and I don't believe there is, but if there is, I want you to consider the amount of return that Calaveras County would get for the investment that it would make. Right now, in Calaveras County, there are between 200 and 250 home care providers. 80% of us are female, 20% of us are male, and more than half of us are middle-aged women. And middle-aged women have a lot of healthcare problems, believe me. I'm a middle-aged woman, or older, and I have healthcare problems. Less than one, less than one-sixth of us have healthcare benefits. 60% of us take care of family members in Calaveras County. We're spread across 1,000 square miles, some of us are 60 miles away from each other. We may be living next door to a home care provider, and we don't even know it, because we are very low-profile people. The maximum cap in California is 11.50 an hour. Some counties have achieved 11.50 an hour. Calaveras has been limited to $10 an hour. Last year, our contract, we asked for nothing except what we had had. So we did not hold out our hands and ask for anything more. I'm not sure that we can ask for anything more, if we're going to ask for wages increase or more healthcare benefits, but I will ask that if you consider giving any other programs additional monies, please hold in, in your conscience that for the amount of investment that you put forth, you get a heck of a lot of return, and it keeps 250 people in a job with an amount of integrity, so that they don't feel like they're completely forgotten. And, and if that were to happen, 250 people would be very grateful, and we will be watching to see how the budget comes together, and keeping our eye on IHSS home care providers.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Peter Race, Valley Springs. I got a question to start off, what, what's happening with the general plan? I thought there was supposed to be a date that's supposed to come back for public and so on. You guys were very quiet on that. Next one is, I owe you guys apology, I screwed up. Martha Calender. My comments were directed about a special district's election. I believe there's some election might be coming up in November, and I realize that all the special districts agreed to put it on August or September election.
August 30th.
August 13th. Anybody informed there's a possibility there's going to be a general election statewide? Would that save them money if they put off this special district election, save money to them and to the election board? So I screwed up on that, because my comments were directed for the next item coming up. Also, I want to inform the board, in case, I'm sure you guys know it well, but the public might not, the state increased, what percentage they're paying on municipal bonds? There was a limit of 6%. It's been increased to 12%. Presently, they're paying 9%. So many folks say, hey, we're getting a grant from the sky, it's costing the future generation 9% presently. Also, would like to mention that we formed that California, distinguished itself, is the first economical state out of 50, and I wonder which one of you folks is going to get up and pound their chest in praise, where is this county in a state as far as economical situation? Who's going to take the glory and the praises for what this county achieved? Also, talking about wages, has there been any wage increase to anybody in any of the departments in the county lately?
No.
Not that you know of? Okay, if I find out, you don't mind if I make it public. Next thing, would you folks like to inform the public, for every dollar we send to the state, what we get back, how many cents we get back? When, do you folks know it? Well, important sales tax, I mean, I'm talking about the property tax and gas tax that we send over to the state. What percentage does the county get back?
Not enough.
I was shocked, I was really shocked, and somebody from Angels Camp was able to set me straight. Six, seven cents out of each dollar, folks. And when you get it back, you folks somehow forget it, mentioned all the little tidbits, conditions, you have to cash those grants, that somebody's not mentioned, little tidbits of legal requirements that you comply to, to get six cents back out of the money you gave to the state. Also, I'd like to inform you folks that the state decided, and I'm sure you rank and file, union members are going to be very happy, the 500-plus committees that the state has, the commissioners are going to not get a pay cut. They don't have to worry about it. All those retired good politicians, they will not get any cut in their pensions, their pay, or anything. So I'm sure you're going to be very happy to inform all the rank and files, that you take their dues out, give it to the organization, so they can give it back in endorsement and campaign cost. They're going to be very happy to make sure that your local rank and files really getting their monies worth. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm closing public comments, we'll move forward to item 11. The proposed action is to adopt a minute order discontinuing the publishing of the Board of Supervisors' agendas and summaries. This is being brought to us by the clerk of the board, Madeline. Would you like to initiate the discussion?
I'd like to hand out the Madeline Kurska, Calaveras County Clerk Recorder. I'd like to hand out photos of our lighted kiosk for 24-hour viewing of our agendas.
Just suitable for framing?
As your agenda packet says, I am proposing the adoption of a minute order to discontinue the publishing of the Board of Supervisors' agendas and summaries, beginning today. The law that requires posting of the agenda 72 hours prior to said meetings, our current practices of publishing the papers exceeds the requirements. We post on the county website, we send via email to all the local news media, the lighted kiosk is now available 24 hours a day, and the cost of publishing, as said in your agenda packet, for the past eight board meetings, the total publishing cost is eight, was $823 for the agendas, and $1,311 for the summaries. This could give us additional savings between now and preliminary agenda, excuse me, preliminary budget. I have talked to each one of you by way of email or in person, and this is in the proposal for the board's budget to be adopted in June, the week of June 6th. So this would just be an earlier jump on this. So this would just be an earlier jump on this. The, another possible place to send the summary, agendas, excuse me, and summaries would be to all the local libraries and for their communities to post on the bulletin board. That could be emailed or faxed. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Madeline, by the board? Any public comments? If so, please come forward.
I did have a question. I'm interested in your perception of how people find out about our agenda. Some are electronic, but there are many areas of the county that do not, cannot afford that form of communication. I represent a good part of that. How do you think people find out about the business that comes before the board? What are the mechanisms and what has been most effective?
Again, at-
I'd ask the same to the audience if anybody wants to participate during this.
Yes. Again, I, at this time, like in District Two, are areas where they don't have internet. I, if they are reading the paper, perhaps they find out that way or by their own networks. I know D Two has their own network of posting of things that are on the agenda of interest to D Two. I don't know if they're reading the paper or not or how they're finding out. But again, our legal requirements are only to post here. And we've gone beyond that by sending it to the paper and the website.
And you said you would fax it to the libraries?
It can be faxed or emailed to the libraries, yes, to post on their bulletin boards.
But you're fairly close to anybody in the community if they wanted to go to the library, the local library?
West Point.
Well, it's six miles from my house to the nearest library, but...
Okay, any other questions?
Depends on where you live.
I'll open it for public comments. Any public comments on this item?
Mike Dawson Valley Springs, I just was not really understanding. Are we going to stop posting the agenda on the websites? There's at least a-
We're going to publish the newspaper.
Okay. So I would, obviously, we want to still keep that part, the electronic portion, because we're already paying for all the infrastructure that keeps all that going. So that's good. I think being open and transparent is a requirement for government of people to be able to govern themselves, spending this money to publish it out and let people who don't have electronic, I'm also supporting of continuing doing what we've been doing. In fact, apathy is such a problem in our county. The more we can do to get people involved and engaged, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. And for this item, I'll limit the public comments to three minutes per person, so.
You can do thirty seconds for me. It seems like a good idea. It would save the taxpayers money and it doesn't appear to reduce the public's access to the information. So I would encourage exceptional alertness during the trial period or during the beginning of this to make certain that that is true to the case. And if such is, my, well, I think the taxpayers would certainly complement this effort in a way to save taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with, I'm just actually speaking for myself today for Valley Springs. I sent an email to you. I'm not sure if you received it. I was a little concerned about this item. Many people do have computers these days, but there are a lot of people that do not have a computer, cannot afford one, or don't have internet access and they don't have the means to drive to San Andreas once a week to look at, you know, something posted on the building. I'm very concerned about excluding this portion of the citizens of the county from knowing about what's happening with their government and government meetings. There are people that are very interested and very active and if, I'm not sure if they, you know, didn't see it in the paper, they wouldn't be able to know. The post offices, the libraries are not necessarily close to people's location. You know, they may just be able to afford a subscription to the newspaper. That may be the only place they know what's going on. If they find out what's going on, they could at least call their supervisors and talk to them. I did make a couple suggestions if you do have to cut these funds, although I could say I really would hope you can find the funds. It works out to about a thousand dollars a month to let people know what's going on in the paper. I do feel the agendas are of primary importance, perhaps as summaries. If something needs to be cut, the meeting summaries may not be as critical as at least keeping the agendas out there so people know what's happening in their, in their meetings. And if you cut the summaries and the figures that were in the presentation package, that would be over a sixty percent savings if the summaries were not published. So I would just encourage you to at least consider keeping the agendas published in the paper and perhaps there might be a savings if the font size was reduced also, depending on what newspaper rates were. So I just would encourage people to consider those citizens who don't have computer access and allowing them to participate in their public government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs, Rancho. Without reiterating, I would just like to ditto what Colleen just said. And the interest in people that do not have access to the internet or transportation is a big thing to the library. Just because they can't get here to the board meetings on Tuesdays does not mean that they are not concerned and have a voice within their community and then other people bring their voice here. So I like the idea of taking it in stages and trying to find the, what is it, four hundred dollars a meeting or something as opposed to a thousand. So I know you have access, but a lot of people don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
I'm Will Moore, Valley Springs, and I'd like to support what these ladies have said. We are moving into this electronic world and some of us have made the transition, sort of. But there still is a significant part of the population that are still based in print media. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment. Prior to us posting the agenda and the minutes on the website, we used to mail out to all the fire departments, we used to mail out to CCWD the agendas. That's another option. We can mail this out. We cannot do it until Thursday noon because that's when the agenda at that stage is sort of final. Anything can change after that time. That's another option. If somebody wants us to mail the agendas out, we can. I think the bottom line right now is, we all know and everybody in this room should know, it is about the dollar. We just can't afford to do this anymore. It's plain and simple.
Madeline, when we mailed out, did we not, people had to submit envelopes with stamps?
Yes, what they did is we had packages of postage page, self-addressed stamped envelopes. And as soon as we could do the agenda, we knew it was final, the preliminary agenda was final. At that stage, we would mail them out. And we can go back to, we step back seven or eight years in that aspect. We're more than willing to do that. But again, it's the money. It's pure and simple money. Thank you.
I think the board understands the reason for the request. Peter, what are your comments?
Peter Race Valley Springs, Rancho Calaveras. I believe if, even if you put, you can still email to the papers and they can decide if they want to or not publish the agenda. That would be up to them. And just like you can email it to the firehouses, the libraries, many of the public agencies that print it out and put it on the bulletin board. Now, also, I want to bring it to your attention that even if you publish, paying for publishing the agenda, what do you talk about? Five, six thousand subscription out of forty-five thousand? So get a reality check, you know? Now, I'm sure that money she's going to be saving, she'd be more than happy to put on her website your conflict of interest statement, your expense report. That would be, you know, that would be a good way to use money because I think people are interested. That website been staying blank for a couple of years now. I would think that you folks would be happy to disclose where you're spending your money, your expenses, your political contribution, et cetera. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Holly Lyons, railroad flat. I just, I can ditto what the other women have said and Mr. Dusand. And that's the main point that I want to make. I think this is the first time I've ever stood up to second something that Mr. Dusand has said. Here are two groups of people who have very differing views on many issues regarding county government. But one thing that we have in common is that we want to see transparency and we want to see the widest access to the largest number of people. And I think the compromise which Colleen had suggested of eliminating the summaries, because people in time can get a hold of a summary. But an agenda is something which must be done in a timely fashion if somebody's going to respond to an issue. And maybe we could start by cutting the budget by about sixty percent and continuing to publish the agenda. Thank you.
Marty Crane, again, two things. Yes, the distribution for the papers as a percentage of the whole of our population might not seem like reaching out to everyone. But those who do not have access to internet, that may be their only way of connecting and that might be a large part of the people that subscribe. Just a thought. And also, I'd like to thank Madeline for being proactive here and trying to find a solution. I do like the idea though of scrunching it down to a more manageable dollar amount, but keeping it in the paper. So, thank you.
Wait a second. You'll have your phone second time, right, sir?
Come on, Peter.
Okay, fine. Every person in a county have your phone number. All it takes is you pick up the phone, nice Sunday afternoon, and you'd be more than happy to have them call you and you will tell them what's in the agenda. And that's free.
I think the whole county should call me.
They call you, you don't want to run their problem.
That's true, Peter. That's true. Okay, Al.
It's real short.
Let's wrap this thing up. I think we had the issues before this.
This is a suggestion. The, you can get a computer program that can do automatic faxing and it can be set up where people simply call. And then if they have access to a fax machine, they can get the agenda faxed to them.
Any other public comments? I'm closing public comments. I'm bringing the discussion back to the board. Any comments by board members before I entertain a motion?
I like Al Stack's idea that that's probably one of the coolest things I've heard so far. So you make a phone call and they want it faxed to him, they can just fax it to him.
Comments? Any comments?
I'm not sure why we're paying for this service. I've been a board member for close to two and a half years. And for two and a half years, I've seen this boardroom having a number of reporters in it, including this afternoon and this morning, we even have an editor here from one of the local newspapers. Why is our agenda not newsworthy? Every time I come here for every meeting, everything we do here is newsworthy. There's reporters out there reporting on it. So I'm not sure why we're even paying for this service. I think it should be a local news media service, especially the size of the county that we have, that is, it's newsworthy. Anything on our agenda should be a concern for our local residents and it should be just like any other story put out there in a newspaper. And I thought it was brought up to the fact that if they choose, if we can email it to them, if they choose to print it as being newsworthy, that they should print it.
I've closed public comments. Okay, please come to the podium.
You're not a local news editor? That's what you're going to clarify?
Just a point of clarification. Madeline said that the-
Please give us your name and who you represent for the record.
Nick Baptista, represent the public right now. Madeline said that the agenda comes out at noontime Thursday. That's a little bit late for some of the newspaper deadlines. So we couldn't get the whole agenda in anyway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Further board discussion. Steve?
I guess I'm still not clear on how people get their information. I know in my district that the best way we've been able to get news out is by having bulletin boards in the small towns that people, that's the go-to place. The closer to the post offices where almost everybody goes, because we have very few rural delivery routes, the more viewers there are. So at the community halls, at, at or near post offices, and by the way, the post office seems to be changing its policies relating to our ability to post. So working that out is another aspect. I'm very, I'm very concerned that people, especially at the low end of economics, are not electronically oriented. Many seniors are still not connected and there are parts of the county in which the dial-up is so slow as to become almost useless anyway. So my, my concern here is that we have a valid substitute if we're going to back off of something. Whether the county can make a, an upfront investment in sites, one site in each town where county and other news can be posted. That would take a little money, but then it wouldn't be ongoing. Would, to me, be a substitute that would work at least in some places in the county. Small towns with town centers, places where people go on a regular basis. Until there's some alternative, I'm just inclined to save this little money for what may be a cost in the ability of people to participate. Knowing what's on the agendas gives people a chance to know whether it affects them and whether they want to participate in government. We've been pretty good at that, at least. This, this room is more full than San Joaquin Board of Supervisors, many, many much larger places. And I think part of that has been our effort to get the word out as to what we're up to. And part of it is the high level of civic engagement of our population. But I think the two are linked and I would hate to take a piece of that and diminish it before we had a valid substitute. If the board still wishes to go forward, I would hope that they take the compromise solution and save sixty percent upfront now and see how that affects people. Because it is the, in my view, the media's job to report on what happens at these meetings and get the news out, at least that portion of which is newsworthy. And, but the idea of whether you're going to participate or not has everything to do with what's on the agenda and whether it affects you or whether you're interested in the subject. That, I don't think, can be sacrificed.
What I was thinking, Steve, as you were talking, going back to again when we prior were mailing out the agendas, your district is very, very active and I know there's probably a lot of people in your community that live in select areas that would be maybe more than happy if we mailed them or emailed them the agenda and posted it in those areas. Would that be compromised possibly?
Well, if this thing goes down the way, I suspect it will, then we would certainly scramble to try to, try to fill that, that gap, yes.
Okay, go ahead. Give it to her.
One of the concerns that we did hear from Nick was the fact that it was Thursday afternoon giving these other, all these other ideas that are popping out here. Would it be possible, since we generally get our packet today, and I know it's, it's a preliminary agenda that we do get, is there a possibility that we can look to get a preliminary agenda or something out there, say, Wednesday evening, Nick? Would that suffice if we could get something Wednesday evening, early Thursday morning out?
For Friday publications.
For Friday publications? If we could strive to move that way, we could still get it and get it, what I'm hearing, as a news item and not have to pay for it?
I do know in the past when we would prepare the packets, this is pre-website days, we would have a packet for each of the press on Tuesday when we gave it to the board. So as early as Tuesday, and again, it's preliminary agenda. Everybody needs to know that and it could change.
And I'm sure that could be put in the paper, that this preliminary could change.
So it could be given to them on Tuesday?
And generally, the only thing that changes is, is once in a while we'll add an item that's an emergency item or one will be taken off. But generally, it stays pretty much the same.
So that's another option on Tuesday. It could be given to, emailed to the various press members. That's another possibility.
Okay, other board comments?
I'll give my comments then. I am strongly in favor of adopting the minute order as presented. We can effectuate some, some positive savings. I think we should do so. Quite frankly, it always sort of surprises me when we have these conversations that, you know, that everybody assumes that everybody in the county is just dying to know what's on the board's agenda. Almost nobody, I think, reads the dang paper or gets the paper to find out what's on the board's agenda. If you look out here, most of the time, we have the same people here to comment on, on these types of items. If people have other issues, whether it be the trapper issue or land use project issue, they're very well aware of that. They don't pick it up from the board's agenda. In all my years in the county, before I was on the board and I can almost assure you after I'm on the board, the last thing I'm going to be getting the paper force to read the board's agenda.
If you want to read it—
If you have a personal project, you're aware of that. So the idea that, you know, how many people are going to show up at a board meeting that happen to just be looking in the newspaper and seeing the board's agenda and saying, "Oh, I think I'll show up for that agenda item," that's almost none. I mean, you probably can count it on one hand over a year's time. So I, I just don't think the, that it's true that, you know, people aren't informed unless they see the board's agenda as they're glancing through the paper, number one. Number two, I totally agree with Gary. We did cut off, I don't know what it is we cut out, but we cut out something and that we were paying for, and the paper just kept carrying it, because it's news, it's newsworthy. And if you're the paper of record, then people expect you to, to carry those things that are, that are, that people are going to, that people that look and buy the paper, because it's the paper of record and want to read all that stuff, also want to take a look at that. And so my own inclination is it would be probably very unlikely that whichever paper is picked as the paper of record isn't going to carry those as, as part of a full agenda that goes with being the, the, the paper of record. And I'm for paying for those things that state law requires that we publish, and I'm not for doing those things that state law does not require. And I think most papers will, particularly the paper of record, will cover many of those things that are, that are not required to be published, because that basically is, cuts them with their circulation, and, and it goes with being the paper of record. So just like we hold a news conference out here, the paper wants to report on it, we don't pay them for that. So I don't have a problem with this. I think we should make up for the savings, all the savings available to us. So those are my feelings, that there isn't further board discussion. You wish to discuss something?
I'm going to support it as recommended. We've already had a request Bonnie did on IHSS. This is just the start, and we have to find ways to communicate differently. I mean, I just asked Steve about the post office. He said they've been told they have to take all the announcements down, but if the community bulletin board is not on Fed, what's deemed federal property, the agendas can go on those. I can address the postmasters in areas outside the Ebbets Pass area, but the postmasters in Ebbets Pass would be happy to put the agenda on the community bulletin boards. And that is, that's just another way we've done that in the past. We used to send it to them, and we can do that again. We just have to start thinking of what's going to happen when we go into budget hearings. And, and if we can save a few thousand or what's proposed $12,000 in the next budget year and start it now, then I think we need to make those difficult decisions and find other ways to communicate. I know, I have office hours at the Arnold Library, and many people in the community go to the library to access the computer, and whether it's the Internet, the county website, other options are out there. And I think we need to just take advantage of those. So I will support this recommendation from staff.
Any other board comments? Chair's open for a motion.
I'll move this side on.
Chair's open for a second.
I'll take it.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Spellman. Do I have further board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes on a four-one vote with Supervisor Walensky in the negative. We'll move forward to item 12, a minute order. Authorizing the attach, attached budget adjustment, increasing the coroner's budget line item 5271, professional and specialized services, and a draw on general fund contingencies in the amount of $25,000 for the fiscal year 2010, 2011. Okay. Kevin, give us your pitch. I think maybe we should cut the compensation of the coroner by $25,000. What do you think?
Quite possible. Kevin, I agree, dollars can be cornered. We're here, as you said, today to ask for $25,000 for line item 5271, which is professional services. Professional services budget is completely depleted due to the large amount of autopsies we've done this year. Currently, we've investigated nearly 200 cases, and, well, for the fiscal year, we will investigate about 200 cases of that. About 50% require an autopsy, and the fund is completely depleted. We have no money left to pay the bills for April, May, and June. So we're asking for $25,000 to cover line item 5271.
Just out of curiosity, if the board didn't give it, what would happen?
We'd still do autopsies, and come June, I would pay the bills with, with my new budget. Right now, between February 22nd and now, we've done approximately 20 autopsies at a cost of around $1,300 apiece to the county.
What generates an autopsy?
An autopsy, if you haven't seen a doctor, you're going to get an autopsy. Suicide, homicide, homicide autopsies are about triple what a normal autopsy is. Last year, I was instructed by you to come up with a fee schedule, which we're going to look at here in the next couple of months, as far as possibly charging a fee—
That wasn't going to be my next question.
—to the families, which I don't agree with, but everybody else in the state is doing it, and, you know, it's the way we have to go.
Just as a health issue, I think people should, would like to know what their, what their direct descendants died from, because that's a pretty—
Well, and we try to look at—
To be careful about.
—things as hard as we can. The requirement is, if you haven't seen a doctor in 20 days, you're, you're a coroner's case if you pass away. But we can talk to a doctor. Maybe they've seen the doctor in the last six months, and the doctor knows what the person is, you know, what's been going on.
Problem for.
But, you know, this year, we've had a high number of accidents. Suicide rate is very high. Those are all cases that you cannot avoid an autopsy on. So currently, we're, we're averaging about 100 cases a year in Calaveras County. Yes, sir.
Who made, who mandates autopsies, and what percentage of the cost is borne by the agency mandating it?
The state of California mandates—
And what percentage of the cost is—
Zero.
Wow, yeah, okay. There you have it.
We have to make sure that all the citizens know if they're about to die, they'll move to San Joaquin County.
You have to make sure you see a doctor or—
Is there any, is there any way to, I mean, is this just a statewide thing? It's just accepted by the—
Statewide, yeah, statewide.
There's a cost that's completely borne by the county?
State law that requires—
Correct.
I mean, if the state mandates, I mean, how could they possibly mandate something that they, they grant no funding for? That doesn't seem right.
Well, it's mandated by law. You know, if you, if you die of an accident—
It's unconstitutional if they don't, you know, the sheriff in, not, not the famous Maricopa County Sheriff, but there's another guy, Sheriff Mack. He sued the federal government and won during the Clinton administration for a federal mandate that gave no funding. Took it all the way to Supreme Court and won. Mandates without funding are unconstitutional, and this is something that particularly sticks in my craw, because as being educator before being elected to the Board of Supervisors, I was constantly part of a system that required federal mandates under President W. Bush that mandated every, you know, No Child Left Behind, which, you know, on paper, sounds like a great program, but they underfunded it by, you know, $4 for every 10 they were required to, to provide the program. So that's something that always bothered me. It wasn't that I didn't want better education for our youth, it's that if the federal government gave certain mandates to the educational system and then underfunded it, that's not, that's not constitutionally correct. And so if the state's requiring us by mandate to, to perform autopsies on, you know, whatever people, they're, they're determining the criteria, I think that they are, there at least, at the very least, should be some cost sharing. And I thank you for bringing this point up, because I will be speaking with my state Assemblywoman, Kristin Olson, and I will be speaking with my state Assemblyman, I mean, my state senator, about this, because it is, it's constitutionally illegal, as far as I know. I'm not a legal scholar, and I don't possess a law degree, but I do have a degree in history, and I do know a little bit of something about what's constitutional.
Maybe we could get together and talk about that yourself.
Well, we do have a constitutional scholar sitting up here, so I'll go to Jim Jones.
Maybe, maybe this could be added to Obamacare.
There actually is a recent appellate court decision on unfunded mandates. It doesn't apply to this situation, but, and I'll have to reread it to see—
Why would it not apply to this situation?
I can't tell you.
Okay. Why don't you take a look at it?
But we have a lot of unfunded mandates.
I think it probably turns on the theme of the mandate.
Okay.
At this point, if we don't do, I mean, we could, we could sign them out all day long, but number one, I'm not a doctor, and it's putting my neck on the line, so—
That's fine. No one's asking you to put your neck on the line.
Can we put this off until we hear about the appellate court decision?
No. I mean, we're still going to have to pay money.
I still have to pay my bills. I've got the next three months to go.
We can, we can send in a claim to the state, and if, if we win, then, then, then fine, and if we don't, why—
Send the bill to the state.
Well, we have a lot of unfunded mandates. This is just an example. Kevin, didn't you come last year?
Yes, I did. I was here last year about the same time, asking for the same amount. And I'd like to thank you that you did bolster my line on 5271 last year by $25,000 for this year's budget.
And it's still not enough?
No, it's going to take—
We went up $25,000 from last year, and still we do.
Well, with the budget recommendation you had, I needed to have it at $80,000, and, you know, at $1,300 a case, if you do the math, it's 130 anyway you look at it.
At the very least, we could send them a note and say, you know, if the, if the idiots in Sacramento could figure out how to run a budget, maybe we wouldn't have so many suicides.
Why didn't I think of that? Okay. Any other board discussion? Any public discussion? Chair's open for a motion.
So move this side on.
This does require a four-fifth vote of the board. It's a law on contingencies.
I second the motion.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Walensky. Do I have further board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes on a four-one vote of the board, with Supervisor Spellman voting in the negative. We'll move forward then to item 13. A resolution authorizing a professional services agreement between Calaveras County and Paratransit Services, excuse me, for management and operation of Calaveras Transit from July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2015, with an option to extend an additional two years. This is Public Works item. Jamie, welcome aboard.
Good morning. Jamie Azarvan, Department of Public Works. The county is currently in a four-year contract with MV Transportation for the operation and management of our public transit system, Calaveras Transit. The current contract expires June 30th of this year, so Public Works went out with a request for proposals to solicit, proposals for the new contract effective July 1st. In response to the request for proposals, we received three proposals. Consistent with federal transit administration requirements and procurement policy, this procurement was conducted through a competitive proposal process, which means that it was based on quality of the proposals and qualifications and other factors such as cost. And FTA and Caltrans have both approved the process, which was required before the bid documents went out. The proposals were evaluated and ranked by an evaluation committee consisting of representatives from the City of Angels, the County of Calaveras, and the Council of Governments. The evaluation committee unanimously ranked Paratransit's proposal and identified that proposal as the most advantageous to the county and offering the best value, and directed staff to move forward with negotiations. Value-added services and costs, which I'll explain a little bit later, were negotiated, which are reflected in the staff report and the agreement. The new contract term is four years with an option to extend an additional two years, and per funding requirements, Caltrans has already approved the contract language and contract document, so it just needs approval by the board. There are some significant changes that I'd like to mention to the board today from the current contract, and these changes were made in an effort to increase efficiency and performance. Maintenance is being brought in-house to the public workshop, so Public Works will now perform all vehicle maintenance on our fleet, and this is expected to result in an annual savings of $50,000. The new contract reflects increased accountability on the contractor. The contractor is now expected to maintain a 10% state mandated fare box recovery ratio, or liquidated damages will be assessed. This provides a little more incentive for the contractor to operate an efficient transit system, and of course, staff will continue to also make improvements and, and work towards exceeding the fare box recovery ratio. The contract also requires more comprehensive reporting in an effort to allow staff to make better decisions and have more accurate information when making service changes or other system efficiency improvements. The contract reflects additional recommendations of the 2009 Short Range Transit Plan, which was approved by the board. An ADA certification process will be implemented and managed by the contractor, and that is anticipated to increase fare revenue. And then a travel training ambassador program will also be managed by the contractor, and that's going to increase ridership, is what we project. This increased accountability placed on the contractor will allow the county to focus on other things, such as compliance, grant management, planning, oversight, also working towards improving efficiency and implementing the capital improvements that we have in the near future. Some of the highlights of Paratransit's proposal include a strong management information system. There is an increased checks and balances regarding fare collection that doesn't currently exist, and so this will ensure that appropriate fares are being collected. It's just a little more accountability placed on the contractor and on the drivers. Demonstrated experience improving efficiency in fare box recovery ratios in other jurisdictions. There were two specific counties where this particular contractor worked diligently and actually increased the fare box recovery ratio by a significant amount. Excellent references were provided. We contacted references. The agencies were very pleased with the services that this contractor has provided. Strong focus on on-time performance, which has been a factor in ridership in the past. People are saying, you know, if I have to wait 20 minutes for a bus, I'm not going to be able to use it. So there was a strong focus on on-time performance that the evaluation committee recognized. They will be implementing an ADA certification process, and this is a process to ensure that only qualified individuals receive the disabled fare, so the reduced fare, and that is anticipated to increase fare revenue. They will be implementing and managing a travel training program, so they'll go out to the community, do presentations. They will do one-on-one travel training for those who are either unable to ride the bus by themselves or need some assistance, or maybe they're a little afraid to use the bus. And they are also committed to significant outreach efforts, marketing, community events, advocate, advocacy events. They also have added technology enhancements and appropriate staffing levels to meet the requirements of the request for proposals, which was important. The cost during the first year is $579,271, and our current contract, we're paying this year $596,649. And there's an annual escalation rate of 2.8 percent. Industry standard is about 3 percent. And so I'm available to answer any questions.
On the extension of the two-year option, is that by mutual consent?
That'll be by mutual consent and at the board's direction.
Okay. Board comments?
No, this is quite different than what we've done in the past. It's going to be a challenge to see how, especially that 10 percent, and how is the maintenance paid for?
The maintenance will be paid similar, same funding that's paying for it now, LTF.
It'll just go to the, up here.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any public comments?
Yes.
Here you go.
Good morning, board. My name is Bill Lewis. I'm the Regional Vice President with MV Transportation. I've got a few comments regarding the selection process. After eight years as the county's contractor for MV, for transportation, it's with great disappointment that I come to the Board of Supervisors today to discuss staff recommendation for Calaveras Transit contract and the scoring associated with it. MV values its relationship with the county, and we would hate to impact it by protesting this award.
Will you pull that mic up and speak a little louder, please?
You can't.
I'm going to have to lean. Is that better?
Okay.
MV values its relationship with the county, and we would hate to impact it by protesting this award. However, I feel we were not given any information after the intent award was issued, meaning we didn't know exactly what to protest. We had five days to protest after the intent was issued. We were promised by Jamie Azarvan a staff report that would be issued outlining the specific reasons MV wasn't selected by the award committee. Unfortunately, this never occurred. We learned early on, even before the intent award was to be issued, that we were not committee's choi— choice, and tried desperately to determine why. Ms. Azarvan even had a conversation with MV's president advising him that the staff report would tell all. Now that the staff report is out, a report retrieved from the Calaveras website, we cannot understand how the proposal was scored. I have a few examples. Number one, experience. Paratransit Services scored a 93%, and MV Transportation scored an 87. I cannot understand the score. MV has been around longer than Paratransit Services. We've been in business since 1975, or Paratransit Services has been in business since 1980. MV has partnered with Calaveras County since 2003, managing the Calaveras Transit operations specifically. MV is the largest American-owned transportation company in the U.S. and the largest private provider of transportation service contracts in the state of California. Number two, approach to system management. The first point focused on qualifications of site manager. How is it that Paratransit Services scored a nearly perfect 99 and MV scored a 75 when the current site manager for MV, Annie Self, has been in her position as GM for the services for the past four years? In fact, Annie was contacted by Paratransit Services and offered the GM position on a suggestion from county staff. How can the evaluation committee consider Paratransit Services qualifications if, in fact, they approached our manager because the one in their proposal wasn't strong enough? Number three, approach to the system operation. How is it that Paratransit Services can score 90 and MV a 78 when we partner with the county since 2003? How can anyone understand the transit service in the county better than MV Transportation? MV has worked diligently with county staff to redesign the system to benefit the needs of the citizens in the county. Furthermore, MV has crafted monthly staff reports based on the county's needs. Over the course of the last term of the contract, MV has had a fantastic safety record. We've operated the last two years without a preventable accident, which is related to our driver training program. Number four, cost. How can MV and Paratransit Services have an identical score of 85 when it comes to cost? The board package points out that in year one, the county realized the savings of $23,828 in startup costs. However, the maximum obligation for services is only $16,924 less than the current operation ran by MV Transportation. Paratransit Services' total cost outlined in the board packages, $579,725 in year one, compared to MV's cost of $475,98, or a difference of $104,627 in year one. The overall cost for, of the four-year agreement for Paratransit Services is $2.4 million compared to MV's cost of $1.95 million, or a difference of $468,000 over the four-year period. How can Paratransit Services cost nearly one-half million more over the term of the contract and still be scored the same as MV? Shouldn't MV be scored the highest for the lowest price in the cost category? If these difficult financials, in these difficult financial times, is the county willing to pay almost a half a million dollars more to a lesser experienced company to oversee their transit operation? In closing, I urge the board to reconsider this award. MV Transportation has partnered with the, with the county through difficult times and cut costs in 2009 when transit funding was impacted by the state of California. When additional staffing needed to be added, MV did it at no cost to the county. Annie Self, MV's GM, has worked tirelessly with county staff to consult on the system, improve the overall passenger experience, and has taken great care of the local employees. The scoring does not make sense when you consider these points. Further, county staff has never voiced its dissatisfaction with MV's performance, so if the company has done a good job, has better qualified GM, and is nearly half a million dollars cheaper than the company that will have to undergo a potentially disruptive transition, why not keep MV? I respectfully urge the commission to do just that. Please reject staff recommendation and recommend an award to MV. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Peter Ray's Valley Spring, County Calaveras.
Three minutes, Peter.
Good. You're considering an out-of-state agency group company to take over. And if you take a look at the cost increase right now, this year, you're talking about $19,000 difference between the two companies, and I believe this company, one was from Modest, another one was for Fairfield. He can correct me if I'm wrong. It's a local company. I believe there's a $19,000 difference in the first year when they would take over, but by next year, they would be charging, I believe, the same amount as being charged right now. If you take a look at this, $579. You can take a look at the figures front of you. I'm not gonna bore you with mine. Something is fishy here, folks. I mean, to me, the whole public transportation is not exactly too kosher, but there's something definitely fishy here. You're going out of state from a company supposed to be nonprofit company from Washington, where you have, in California, a privately-owned company that you haven't wished about too much lately. I mean, there's a lot of general complaint, okay? I'm not this crazy about these guys, okay? But there's something fishy here. Why would you go out of state for $19,000 difference the first year and eventually sign a bill, assign a contract that in four, five years, adds about 30, 40% increase? Something is not quite right here, folks. I'm glad somebody prepared this brochure for you guys, but I would very strongly suggest you folks better do some homework, plus I want to remind you, that's coming down from the state. Funds for public transportation in general is gonna be cut tremendously, so for you to commit yourself into a four-year contract without really knowing what's gonna be coming down the pipeline from Sacramento, it's not the wisest decision to make. Thank you. Was I in there three minutes?
Yep. You're fine. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
House of Galloway, Taxpayer Association.
Well, those are pretty good comments that Peter made. Number one, we don't know about the source of funding from the state. We know the state's in trouble. We know the state's naturally irresponsible, can't balance its budget. Number two, I don't think the out-of-state consideration is as important as to what the bottom line is going to be for the taxpayers. Apparently, if what the gentleman said is correct, we're gonna be paying $100,000 more for the service. I would recommend that each of the points that were brought up be responded to by the county administration, and then look, after you look at that and you have a balanced picture, then decide. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing that, I'm gonna close public comments. I have staff to come back up to the podium, please.
Good morning. Jamie Azarvan, Public Works. I was writing frivolously, you know, trying to get it all down, so I'm gonna try to address all of Mr. Lewis's and Mr. Ray's and Mr. Segala's comments. First off, the, okay, as far as maybe the process wasn't, or fishy is what was explained, the process that was followed is a federal transit administration process, and it was conducted by an evaluation committee consisting of five representatives, five total people representing the City of Angels, the Council of Governments, and Calaveras County. And we did that. We wanted to make sure that there was a diverse group evaluating the proposals, and it had nothing to do with our current relationship with MV. It was a process that we had to follow per FTA guidelines. It was the same process that we followed the last time around, back in 2007. We used the same criteria. It was just a different evaluation committee and different proposals that were received. Not, Mr. Lewis suggested that not a lot of information was given, provided. I have spoken to three different representatives from MV Transportation on seven, seven different occasions. Now, this process is a sensitive process, and I am adhering strictly to the state and federal procurement guidelines. I have been trying to, you know, have everything be in writing, and I'm, I've been strictly adhering to the process. So as far as the information that I had provided to MV, what I said was, you know, the criteria was identified in the RFP, and we stuck to that criteria. We could not deviate from that criteria, or else we would not be in compliance with federal transit administration and Caltrans. Approach to system management, that was one of the scoring criteria that Mr. Lewis referred to, and that doesn't reflect the current general manager at all. That's overall system management by the entire organization. And again, that was based on the various proposals we received. We received some great proposals, and it was, you know, it was fantastic, actually, that we received the proposals, and one proposer, Paratransit Services, scored much higher as far as their approach to system management. The $475,000, the $104,000 per year difference, it does reflect staffing levels. We felt, as an evaluation committee, that Paratransit's staffing levels are definitely more appropriate to meet the requirements that were outlined in the request for proposals, and they have excellent employee benefits packages, and there were some value-added services that go along with that. So when we're talking about the prices between the two proposals, we're not comparing apples to apples. Again, the goal, the overall goal of this new contract is to implement the goals of the Board of Supervisors and of the 2009 Short-Range Transit Plan, and that is to increase fare box recovery ratio, increase employee, I'm sorry, increase performance, on-time performance, and increase ridership. That's what we really want to do. We want to provide an efficient system that provides excellent customer service to the members of our county and to the members of our community. Disruptive transition, I can't imagine that that would happen because Paratransit has declared their willingness to retain as many employees as possible, providing that they meet the drug and alcohol and background checks. But that was one of their commitments, and that's one of the key points the evaluation committee recognized in their proposal. It was very important to us to retain as many employees as possible. And I think if I, if I missed something, oh, I want to also state that with this new contract, it's not the lowest cost. It's not. However, if we don't get our fare box up, and I know the board's well aware of this, we lose funding by not meeting our fare box recovery ratio. We're penalized, and that penalty compounds and gets bigger and bigger every year to where that penalty could very well be well over $100,000 if we continue on the track we're on. And Paratransit's proposal and the various services provided in that proposal, the evaluation committee as a whole felt that that would best meet the needs of the county in increasing our fare box, improving efficiency, and operating an efficient system as a whole. And I think now I've addressed, I think, most of those. Does the board or the public have any questions for me?
I do have one, one thing that was raised, but I don't think you addressed, which is quite, there was some implication that maybe one of these was more local than another. Did you have any review of local bases? It strikes me that the MV says they're the biggest in the nation, so that can't be a Calaveras-based operation, but I'm wondering about the comparisons and whether that entered into your consideration and what you found.
It didn't. By law, we were required to adhere strictly to the criteria in the request for proposals. It would not be consistent with FTA policy if we were to give a local preference or to have that factor in, in the decision at all. We adhered strictly to the criteria that was spelled out in the RFP and did not deviate from that at all.
All right. We got a couple of questions. Sure. Go ahead.
You done?
Yep. Go ahead, Gary.
Jamie, I've got a couple of questions for you. One is, we're asking to adopt a resolution authorizing a professional service agreement. I don't have a copy of the agreement. How do I know what I'm agreeing to? I have no idea. It's not attached, so I can't begin to understand or even read what it says. Second is, do we, the question was raised about a four-year agreement, and are we obligated to a four-year agreement? And also, was, questions were raised about the scoring, and it, my question is, if MV scored as low as they did now, how, how did they score in 2004? Were they the same scoring used then to evaluate the proposals at that time? As this time, and if that was so, they were the highest evaluation with these numbers last time? Because I can't see them going down, especially in some of the experience categories as far as experience with our transportation systems, if that's what it was. And then also, I don't have, I don't have any attachment saying what the bid numbers were from the other companies to, I can evaluate the difference. He brought up a $500,000 difference, but I have no numbers adding up or anything to compare that to. So I'm being announced to agree to something that I, I don't have enough information to agree to at this time.
Okay. As far as the agreement not being included, there's a new policy that states that any agreement over, and I believe it's 25 pages, not be circulated with the entire board packet. This agreement is over 200 pages. So in the staff report, it did state that the agreement and the proposal and all of the attachments would be up for review at the board clerk's office. For the four-year agreement term, are we obligated? There are opportunities to withdraw from the agreement, to terminate it. There are actually various clauses, both that are, and that have been reviewed by county council. So we wouldn't be obligated if, for some reason, they weren't fulfilling their obligations or their responsibilities, or if, for some reason, funding wasn't available to fund the contract, there are options to terminate. Scoring, how did they, MV score in 2007? In 2007, MV was the only respondent, so they were the only proposal that the county received, so there was nothing to compare them to. And...
There was no, wait, wait a minute. That brings up, begs another question. You say you followed these and scored these by law. Did you not have to score them also at that time, even though they were the only applicant? If it's a law that says you have to score them, there was no scoring given to them at that time?
Since they were the only respondent, and this predates my employment here, but since they were the only respondent, then we can, had to conduct a price-cost analysis and submit that to Caltrans to verify that the costs were fair and reasonable. So there are options for public agencies who don't receive more than one bid, because sometimes that does happen, and, you know, I can only imagine that here in these economic times that maybe consultants are a little more hungry for work. Actually, 23 different firms picked up our proposal, and I think eight attended our pre-proposal conference and only three submitted. So, so I can't speak to that. I can only tell you that we used the same criteria that were identified in the request for proposals in 2007.
Okay, well, we're including the board. We have one item left for the morning agenda, review of correspondence reports and various matters of concern, and I certainly compliment everybody in the audience for staying for this matter. This is the most important matter on the board's agenda. It's here every week, and so you don't need to read it in the paper. Okay, Gary, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to bring before the board.
Thank you. I'll go to myself. I have nothing to bring before the board. Marita. We're on a roll, Marita.
All right. I'm going to the Visitors Bureau function at Frogtown this week. I have child support in Jackson Friday. Steve, do you have any calendars?
I do.
And Council of Governments and Domestic Animal Advisory Committee, and Area 12 Agency on Aging. That's it.
That meeting on Friday, is that 2:30? Was that Saturday 2:30?
2:30.
Yeah. Okay. And who's next?
I have one thing. Can I go here?
Of course.
Last, last, the last Tuesday that we were here, we weren't here last Tuesday, but the one before, I reported on an AMRA meeting that I had a 10...
before, I reported on an UMR meeting that I had attended, and during the conversations at that UMR meeting, that I reported that Amador County had requested that East Bay Mud pay 60% versus the 50% of the budget that they had been paying. And I received an email yesterday afternoon that East Bay Mud agreed to pay 60% of that budget.
Yeah. That was nice work on the part of the counties.
Mean guy.
Well received.
Just pure meanness is what did that.
Well, we negotiated. We started high at 66% and agreed to 60%, so.
That's what passes for good faith negotiations these days.
Do you have additional comments, Marita?
Yeah. The kids fishing, will they?
Oh, how'd that--
I have to say, I'm on--
That was a swim pool.
Yeah, I'm on the fishing game commission, and we had it up in Murphy's at a pond, and it was great and blah, blah. So we couldn't do it there this year. And Larry Conrato, who's Tom's appointee, fishing game, showed us to at the Angels Pool. I mean, I went ballistic. And what do you mean, we're going to do it at a pool?
Bill's swimming pool.
I mean, it's just, that's not a fishing hole or yada, yada. Well, I am telling you, it was wonderful. We brought water in from the creek, or as Randy Metzger says, the crick. And we stocked it on Wednesday, and there were, I don't know how many old-time Angels camp people that came and said, you don't know what kind of memories this brings back, because I guess 40 years ago or so, they'd fill it with creek water.
Creek.
Creek water, and they'd fish it the first day, they'd swim in it the next four days, then they'd empty it, and then clean it out for a day, and go back and repeat that cycle. I mean, it was so exciting to see, and it turned out to be great. I mean, it was a wonderful event, even though Tom didn't show up and it was across the street from where I live. But outside of that--
I was able to get, I was able to get my limit of fish right straight from the truck.
Does the DWR know that you diverted water from the creek?
Oh, it's a fish--
Oh, wait a minute. Don't get anybody ideas, Gary.
Wait a minute.
The fishing game warden was there with his kids. But it was--
Do you have a lot of kids?
Yeah. Well, we had over 100 kids.
That's nice. Was the water clean enough that you could see the fish swimming, or was it--
No. No, it was creek water.
Yeah, so you couldn't see the fish swimming?
So you couldn't see the--
You just threw your line out there.
And then the water was going to be emptied out, and any fish left over was going, was going back into--
They're going to catch them and put them back on the creek?
Yeah. But it was, it was a great event.
Hundred kids with 100 poles in the pool.
No, we went from 8 to 1, 8:00 AM to 1. But yeah, it was--
But you said you were going to call me when they served lunch.
I called you early, and you didn't respond.
Okay, on that one. Steve, what are your matters of interest today?
Let's see. On Thursday, I will not be at my Mountain Ranch office hours because I'll be involved in a conference with the U.S. Forest Service and the Sierra Cascades Dialogue Steering Committee. I will be attending the Domestic Animal Advisory Committee, and as I understand it, is that, at what time is it? It's on Thursday?
It's Thursday. I have it down, but I don't--
I haven't yet got it.
I think--
I didn't put it on the notice.
I think it's 6, but I'm not sure. Diane, could you check when, let Steve and I know? Thank you.
All right. And on Friday, I'm going to, with a delegation from the Central Sierra to the Region 5 headquarters of the U.S. Forest Service, to talk about local hiring and local activities for forest restoration projects and funding for that. I will be getting back just in the nick of time to the JPA in, the Family Support JPA in Jackson, but unfortunately, I'm going to be missing the other event, which I'm hoping somebody else can attend, which is the Days of Hope that was described this morning. So I'm hoping there will be people from here, there. On Saturday, I'll be back with Region 5 in the early morning, but, and taking three county programs, which will include the Courage to Change, Behavioral Health, Social Club, and a group of folks in recovery at the, in Drug and Alcohol. And we'll all assemble and go in for a couple of hours to pause with their families and all the folks there. So that's, that's exciting. And then right after that, we have a big event in West Point, which is the dedication of the plaque that this board actually had heard, and there will be a gathering of Native American community and others in West Point to dedicate and place that plaque in downtown. So that starts at 11:00 and will go until 8:00 PM. It's a general celebration and observation of, or recognition of Native American culture in West Point. On, on Sunday, I'll be, we will be noting the passing of one of the great people of District 2, Jess Meckling. And I don't know if people knew him, but he was very special to railroad flat in particular, but the whole Blue Mountain area. He passed away while I was gone, but his memorial will be at the American Legion Hall in Glencoe at 2:00 that afternoon. And if you do know him, he was a very special person and dearly loved by a lot of people in our county and well beyond it. In fact, we dedicated a bridge, the Jess Meckling Bridge, crossing the middle fork of the McCallum River before his passing. So he was able to attend, and you'll see that bridge sign as you cross it.
Very nice.
And that's all I have to report.
Okay, we'll go to Darren.
Okay. I've got a bunch of stuff this week. Well, first of all, though, I'd like to, I'd like to make notice that Mr. Michael McDaniel is in the audience today. He's a resident of District 5 in Rancho Calaveras. I noted that he had some publicity in the paper as of late with some important work done with veterans groups, and I want to commend him for his work with the veterans. Thank you for your service. This Thursday, I'll be meeting with the voters as usual in Rancho from 12:00 to 1:30, and Copper from 2:30 to 4:00. I'll also be attending by invitation a meeting that evening in Amador County for the Motherlode Tea Party Group. And I hear they've got quite a rowdy crowd, so somebody said 300 people or something usually show up at their meetings, so.
Where's this?
Amador County. Italian Fairgrounds.
Picnic grounds.
Italian picnic grounds.
Yeah. I don't know if I get to play some bocce or, you know, they--
Some more Mattel Southern Cream. You be the ball.
I'll be the ball. Thanks for the invitation. Friday, there'll be two things going on here. Steve mentioned the Day of Hope, and I've put that on my list of things to attend. I was already going to be here for the welcoming. It was supposed to be this last Friday, but I guess it's going to be this coming Friday, for Melissa, is it Eads?
Eads.
Eads. Who's our new CCOG director? They're going to have a little, you know, I don't know if it was a barbecue, but a luncheon or something, and welcome her. But speaking of barbecue--
It's cookies and milk.
All right. Well, that works too. Speaking of barbecue, Sunday, I will be at a barbecue up near Steve's neck of the woods in West Point at Bryce Randall's place. He does a little community barbecue, and I would encourage Steve to go and come by if you can. I, last time I was there was about six months ago, and I spoke to a lady who was outwardly proclaimed she was a staunch conservative, but she also said that she voted for you in your second run for office because you're a get-things-done type of guy.
Well, you never know what'll happen next.
Yeah, you never know. You never know. So I think you might want to come by if you have a chance. That's on Sunday, the 15th, at Randall's place.
That's communicated upstate.
What time is that?
Let me check real quick here. And then on Monday, I have LAFCO meeting here in the evening with our supervisor, Tryon, and I will both be here for that. LAFCO Monday evening. Barbecue 1:00 PM, it says? That doesn't sound right, but something. I have it down as 1:00 PM anyway.
I must say, you have a quick learning curve. You have a free lunch every day.
Lined up, huh? I think that's it for me.
Okay. I'll go back to myself. I will also be attending the Lodging Association, open house or whatever it is, at Frogtown on Wednesday evening. You guys should be there also.
Which one was it?
I'm going to point out to them who's missing.
What?
It's Frogtown, the Lodging Association, Visitors Bureau, excuse me.
Visitors Bureau.
Calaveras Visitors Bureau.
Oh, yeah. I got that.
Anyway, we may have more than three there.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah. It's penciled into my agenda.
I don't want Peter there taking, taking with his movie camera. Filming us while we're eating. Okay, anything else by board members? If not, we'll go to--
That LAFCO thing for water, wastewater, the report was ex parte. You could tell John and I, it was really well done.
He's low-key, but he's very competent in what he does.
Yeah, it was really well--
Very good job in what he does.
Well--
Easy to get along with, the friendliest guy you'd ever meet. All he wants to do is a good job.
Kind of like me, huh?
Yeah. Like you were described to me by your mother, but your mother was biased, I learned. Okay, Mr. Jones, what do you have for the board today?
Nothing.
County Council's office. Nothing. Jeannie Boyce from the Administration, give them heck.
Just a couple of items. I want, just a couple of items. I just wanted to follow up with you regarding the joint powers. The Effra McCallum River Watershed Authority, Supervisor Topanelli asked if Rob could come in May rather than June. He's not able to make it in May. He's got a family commitment, so we'll get him on the agenda early on June the 7th, and he said that was fine, just to provide an update. Secondly, we got a letter from the Calaveras County Visitors Bureau. They've changed their bylaws, and they are asking for a representative of the board and the City of Angels to be ex officio members of their board. They meet on Tuesday mornings at 8:30, which conflicts with our meeting, but they said they're certainly open to changing the day of their meeting to accommodate our county and our city representatives.
Courtless, have a court. We're going to meet at 8:30 on Tuesday.
Well, they're willing to change the date. So I'm here to ask for your direction if, in fact, you would like Representative, one of you to sit on here.
I advocated for that for a number of months. We always had a position, but it wasn't, it was like an at-large member. And I advocated that they put stipulations that we have a representative there on an equal level, the board level, so.
Why don't you put it on the board's agenda for an appointment? I would support that.
I would support it as well with the hope that we would have somebody from the far end of the county, maybe Gary, but it seems to me their focus has been primarily, and most of their representation is from the other side of the county, so it'd be nice to see them discover all the wonders of the rest of--
Yes.
All the wonders, that's good.
Next, regarding the budget, the state budget that may revise is coming out next Monday, the 16th, so we will see what the governor's proposal is. Realizing that our public safety is still on the table. There's a small working group with CSAC and others working on the implementation of the Public Safety Bill that he signed. Again, he is stating that there will be constitutional protections and ongoing revenues associated with the implementation of any of the public safety shift, but we'll see. So we'll just stay tuned to that agenda item. And next week, we have a couple of study sessions. One will be on the UC Cooperative Extension, our proposal for a multi-county partnership with our foothill regional partners, both Amador, Twalome, and El Dorado Counties. This is, again, a way to save some money and to continue to provide services. And then we'll also have another study session on redistricting next week. That's it.
What was the study session on?
Redistricting.
Oh, my goodness.
And--
Moving way too quickly for Marita here.
We'll have a number of study sessions on redistricting, no doubt. The first of which will be today at 1:30.
Rihanna already has--
Angels Camp in District 1.
District 1, so.
We know how maps will change.
Okay, well, go to the board clerk. Diane, do you have anything for the board today?
Not today.
Not today. Okay, well, I think we--
There's one last thing.
Go ahead.
I almost forgot. I'm glad that Marita's going to be intending child support, you know. You should have paid that years ago. The other thing with Steve, that's a joke. Steve mentioned, when we were talking about the other company, I can't remember what company it was, couldn't be of the transportation, we were talking about that.
Store.
They couldn't be located in Calaveras County if they're the biggest in the nation. Well, I want you to know, I'm giving, you know, I'm probably going to get in trouble for this. People say I can't name companies over the mic or whatever. But in my latest Costco Connection magazine that I get that promotes people who do business with Costco and things like that, the Oars Company, O-R, I think it, believe it, stands for Outdoor Adventure River--
That's our signature--
They are the biggest river guide company in the nation. So we do have--
Possibly the world.
Possibly the world. And they, they set up expeditions in rivers all over the place.
Yes, I would expect that in the recreational industry, just not in the public transit industry.
Yes.
This would be the last place someone would--
We're not, we're not public transportation here.
So I want to make everybody aware that we do have one of the biggest companies in the nation, possibly the world, in Calaveras County for recreation, Oars.
And a very cool--
And we're proud of them.
Okay, we will reconvene at 1:30. We have a bar. There is lunch out here?
Yes.
When do they start serving?
Well, probably in a few minutes.
I'll be there in a few minutes. And do we have time for our closing session? Is there time for the closing session?
Probably not.
Is that part of the $12 for our--
$10, yes.
Is it?
You're helping employees.
Mr. Spellman.